I'm not sure why you're here. It's an odd situation to have me here.
Yeah, I kinda like it.
(laughing). Yes, thank you. All right, we're gonna call the Wednesday, November 16th, the meeting of the Brainerd Planning Commission to order. Director Kramp, can you do a roll call, please?
Gorm.
Here.
Calrus. Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson. Marone.
Here.
Woodward.
Here.
Duval.
Present. Is there a member that would care to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
Kevin?
I absolutely sure I will.
Okay, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to item four on the agenda, approval or amendments to the agenda.
Motion to approve, Gorm?
Is there a second?
Second.
Woodward, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please stick your hands up, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. That passes. Now, we're looking for a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting held on October 19th.
So move.
Woodward, motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Jaeger.
Jaeger, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, sign their five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We're at item six.
I abstained from the minutes, because I...
You were not present, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, please note that. Thank you, Chuck. Old business. Item 6A, we have a proposed ordinance, 1539, amending section 15-4 of the zoning code, restrictions on demolition and removal of dwelling units. James, could you set that up for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, ordinance number 1534 went into effect on July 17th, which imposed a six-month moratorium on the conversion of dwelling units to green space or surface parking in the R1 zoning district. The city currently has a shortage of housing, particularly unaffordable housing. Removal of dwelling units for establishment of green space or surface parking adds to the overall shortage. Staff and the planning commission were tasked to study the issues related to conversion of dwelling units and shall provide recommendations to the city council concerning proposed changes to the city code. So with that, planning commission did hold a workshop on September 7th. During this workshop, planning commission reviewed an example ordinance from the city of Crosby, took a look at that ordinance, and reviewed it and how it would relate to the city of Brainerd and the city of Brainerd's needs. Then also, on October 19th, at the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, there was also a discussion on an example ordinance for Brainerd, and some revisions were made from that discussion. So with that, I want to talk about four different portions of this proposed code here. So, one portion is that consensus from the planning commission was that it would be dwelling units as opposed to structures. So dwelling units would be potentially a four-unit apartment, which would be one structure but four dwelling units, so you're looking at a net loss of dwelling units on the site rather than just structures. Also, as a result of discussions from that meeting, the workshop meeting also talked about residential districts being the primary districts that are affected in the city of Brainerd, and we leave out commercial districts. So with that, our primary housing districts in the city of Brainerd are TN1, TN2, CN1, and CN2. Discussion at the last planning commission meeting is that TN2 should potentially have a special provision in order to create complete neighborhoods. This is a smaller residential housing district in Brainerd compared to TN1. TN1 and CN1 encompass most of our single-family housing. TN2 is a mix of residential as well as commercial. So, planning commission did task staff to take a look at how TN2, you can maybe convert a residential unit into a commercial unit, but did not want to see that unit turned into green space or parking. So the proposed ordinance here does reflect that as well. And then, from the workshop, planning commission did discuss that the exemption should be left in for government agencies and for properties that pose an imminent hazardous condition. So with that, if we can go to the ordinance, did want to go over section A. So section A talks about demolition permits. Except as provided in section A of this chapter, no permit shall be issued to allow the demolition of a dwelling unit in the TN1, TN2, CN1, or CN2 zoning districts unless a building permit is also issued at the same time to authorize construction of a replacement dwelling unit. So again, that talks about dwelling units rather than structures. The second would be a commercial new construction or remodel permit is also issued at the same time to convert or replace a dwelling unit to a commercial unit in the TN2 district. So that'd be essentially a unit for a commercial unit, would not allow for green space or parking in there for a conversion. And then the last section would be city council approval has been granted for an alternate use of the property. Staff's interpretation of this line would be that granted an alternate use of the property would be in the form of a conditional use permit or an interim use permit. Really, the conditional uses in these districts are typically for either schools, some of our neighborhood schools, or churches. There would be bed and breakfast, potentially. So there's a few conditional uses, but that would be essentially an approval of an alternate use for the property. So, for instance, a conditional use permit are allowed uses in that zoning district as long as they meet the conditions and are also supported by the comprehensive plan. So I wanted to take a look at that. The other ways essentially to maybe be able to demo a house would be to rezone the property to a different zoning district other than the four zoning districts that are in here. And then the only other way to essentially be able to demo a usable structure would be to ask for a variance from section A. So you can ask for a used variance, but you could ask for a variance to essentially allow a demolition, as long as you're not permitting a non-permitted use in that zone. So with that, I'll open it up to questions from the planning commission. I guess staff recommendation on here did not include that, but it would be to hold the public hearing, and that staff recommendation would be to recommend approval of ordinance number 1539. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, James. Questions of staff, please. Mr. Jaeger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify section A3. City council approval has been granted, would be granting for an alternate use of the property. That process would bypass the planning commission? That applicant could go directly to city council bypassing the planning commission?
No, it would have to still go to planning commission for a conditional use or interim use.
Okay, understood. That's all. Thank you.
So, just to clarify, it couldn't be just organic, but it would process through as a planning commission land use issue?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If...
Gorm.
Excuse me. If that's the case, which I'm good with, maybe we should clarify by just removing the word "city council."
That'd be a potential.
Because then it would, I mean, it does sound like a different process. So if we just remove the word "city council," then I think, you know, approval's been granted for an alternate use of the property. To me, that says they would have to have applied and received approval, which would include the whole process. Yeah. So, I guess I...
Because we're an advisory body.
Right, we're an advisory body. So I would, I guess I would make that recommendation that we just strike the word "city council."
Okay. Other questions of staff?
All right. Hearing none. I think we will open the public hearing at, I'm gonna pick 6:09 as opposed to 7:10. An hour difference. And if you could give your name and address and direct your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ginny Knudsen, 12319 Thompson Road, Brainerd. I'm here with Father Michael Gary. He's the pastor of St. Francis Church, and I'm one of the trustees of St. Francis Church as well, too. And so, we, the church, as you know, has undergone some expansion and some, and I think it's quite clear that our parking lot installation, which was under a prior conditional use permit, probably brought this issue to the attention of the city. The church may have additional needs for doing work in the future. One project we have is a new rectory for our priests. The current rectory, the house that they live in right now, is pretty inadequate for them. We don't have any specific plans, but we have made it known to our church community that that's something that we will likely do in the future. And I think my biggest concern with the draft of the ordinance was A3 as well, what you had focused on as well, too. And it, one glaring thing that is missing from A3 is specifically referencing that approval has been granted for an alternative use of the property through, and I highly suggest the words "conditional use application," interim use application, be specifically added in A3. That will make it clear that those are the processes that need to be used in order to have a different alternative use of the property. Of course, there are various standards, and there's a whole procedure for that, and so it just makes it clear that we're not talking about some WIM approval, we're talking about a very detailed process for that. So, with that addition to the ordinance, I think that would be appropriate and meet the needs of the city, also taking into consideration that the church may have some requests of the city in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knudsen. Is there anyone else that would care to speak on the proposed ordinance? I'm gonna look to you, if we have anybody online or on the phone that's dialed in. Okay, so that is us. So, with that, then, I think we'll close the public hearing at 6:11 and bring the issue back to discussion at the commission. So, discussion. We've heard a couple of, well, the comments really seem to focus at A3, and we have a couple of suggestions on ways we might amend that language. Is there anyone that would care to maybe put, stitch together a new, newer revised language on that?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Gorm.
Is there a way we can just say, to go through the regular approval process, or the regular, you know, is there a way we can just basically say, this type of change needs to go through the same process that any, that any variance would require?
(laughing).
Trying to find a word here.
No, I get it. I have a ton of respect for Ms. Knudsen. I, I mean, I don't know what the opposite would be. Like, we haven't granted an alternative use of the property through not approved processes? Like, I don't, it seems a little like redundant to me. I don't know.
Well, the only thing is, it's always helpful for us to give information to applicants to know how it works. We can't expect everybody to know the ins and outs of government.
Mr. Jaeger.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm struggling a little bit with the, with the syntax, or how we might craft this language here, because what I want to be careful is that we don't create a line item here that implies that the use is allowed as long as it is either with a conditional use, with a conditional use or a variance process. So that's what I want to be careful that we don't drift into, is that we, we say that it is an allowed use as long as it's conditional use or variance, because the language is saying that this is not an allowed use. So that's my concern here, is that we don't give away traction that we don't mean to give away. That's all. So if maybe staff or somebody can help with, with that a little bit on conditional use versus variance, and that that, that use would be given, that's where I'm, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gorm.
I would just say, I mean, I appreciate that same, that the church is not done with their needs, and I can appreciate that. But in terms of needing a rectory, there are plenty of good properties that do come available on the North Side, and I would happen to, would think that the church could simply go out and find other properties to house a priest, but that's just my opinion. So I think, I think the market would take care of it, is what I'm trying to say.
Ms. Chair? Maybe if I could clarify, too. I don't, I, I'm certain that if we tore down the rectory and built a new rectory, that that's absolutely allowed. I think the only issue would be if we tore down more buildings for parking lot expansion. That is actually what the ordinance is specifically designed not to do. And it wasn't the church in particular, I think, that brought this to the attention, although that was one of the places that was discussed. I know when this was initially brought up, there were some concerns, and there've been long, ongoing concerns with the hospital, and the hospital's kind of continued accumulation of property for conversion to parking. But there are a number of churches in the neighborhood, too, that have done similar things. So, I, my sense, and I don't, please disagree, is that the rectory is not an issue at all in terms of this code. I mean, it's a dwelling unit, and we'd put back a new dwelling unit, and that's exactly what the ordinance is designed to do.
Thank you, Ms. Marone. Other recommendations or other comments on this? I'll look to, I'll look to staff and James, as you're hearing the discussion here, both the, the need to direct the process, and then Mr. Jaeger's point of not inadvertently opening up the use, or the conversion of these things, which this ordinance would be designed to strongly restrict. Can you help us, any suggestions there?
Yeah, so first with the number three line item, I could potentially read if approval has been granted for an alternative use of the property through a conditional use permit or interim use permit, I think it would still have to go through that process from planning commission, as well as approval by city council to do that. I think with the comprehensive plan and how we've been looking at the approval of conditional use permits has to be supported by the comprehensive plan. So, you know, potentially if a school needed to do an addition, hypothetically, I know that they have been reconstructing the schools, but if they needed to do an addition to take down a house, I think that's maybe retrofitting and repurposing a historic building would be potentially supported by the comprehensive plan. Now, if the school came in for a conditional use permit to expand their parking lot area, I don't think anything in there is supported by the comprehensive plan, and, you know, in fact, it would, the comprehensive plan, it would go against the housing section of it, because we'd be losing dwelling units. So in that instance, I think the recommendation, you know, for a conditional use permit would be potentially for a denial, because it is not supported by the comprehensive plan. So I think that, you know, sets up a, a good argument where, you know, it could be denied, but it also could be approved based on that. And typically, most of our conditional use permits in our neighborhoods come from either churches or schools. I guess the second part of that, you know, asked about the question about a rectory and taking down a structure, certainly if it was a, you know, essentially a single-family home for a rectory, that would not be an issue. That's a dwelling unit. Say there was three homes removed for a rectory, well, you know, maybe have to weigh that within the comprehensive plan and whether the, you know, the comprehensive plan supports that part of the conditional use permit. You know, rectories also sometimes have separate quarters for priests, so, you know, if a rectory were made where they had their separate living spaces, a bedroom as well as a kitchen unit in there, you know, I think that would suffice as a dwelling unit. So if it was set up kind of more of an apartment-style type thing. So there are ways to look at that with a rectory unit, there are ways to look at, you know, potential expansions of buildings, historic buildings. But I think this code is spelled out very well to, you know, deter just the parking lot expansion. Originally, I left it, or my recommendation was to leave it open-ended without adding it. You know, I think 99% of the cases, it's, in my mind, it would be through a conditional use permit or interim, interim use permit, but originally wasn't gonna box it in just to those two in case there was another option. But I don't know what that, that option would be. So, you know, I would be in support if planning commission wanted to add those two options that it could be added to the, to the code.
Thank you, James. And Commissioner Gorm, I'm intrigued by, by your, your more process-oriented language versus the specifics, you know? I don't know if you, if you would care to maybe suggest how that might, how that might read in there, that, that then leaves the, the options, process options open, but emphasizes that there must be a process.
Yeah. I don't know if we can just be generic and just say, go through regular process. I think that's too vague. Maybe we could, if somebody could help us, we can come up with a way of being more specific. What we're talking about is getting an exception to an ordinance. And so we have to think of what, how do we go about getting exceptions to any other ordinance? There are variances, there are conditional use permits, there's rezoning, so there's different avenues to go. So we want to somehow address that, if that helps.
Ready to write it.
Yeah. Did I give enough? Right there, it's kind of vague, I just kind of go right off the top of my head of one of the different ways to, to work with, around an ordinance. You can change the zoning of the property, that's one way to look at it. You can get a conditional use permit, interim use permit, or you can look at a variance. Does that make sense? Am I missing anything? Those are the basic three avenues to go, right?
Ms. Chair, just technically, we can't issue variances for uses, so a used variance would not be allowed. So that actually isn't one of the options.
Okay, we'll take that off, that's fine.
You know, I'm, he has a question. Thank you. Go ahead, James.
Yeah, and just for clarification, for three, it talks about uses, like Mr. Marone had talked about, so it really probably only applied to conditional and interim uses. If the property was rezoned, it just, this, this would not apply to that property at this point. And a variance would probably be a variance from, from section A, so it wouldn't be applied to the used portion of it. So really, section three probably only would deal with conditional use as well as interim use permits.
So CUP or IUP is what we're...
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Jaeger.
Mr. Chair, just a quick point of reference. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the interim use means that it is an allowed use. They have the right to that use with conditions attached, right?
With conditions attached, and the city can put terms of how long it lasts.
Right. With the conditional use, it's not necessarily an allowed use. Where I'm trying, where I'm trying to get is to a place where the tear-down and the creation of green space or parking lot is not defined as an allowed use. It's, it's a non-allowed use. And then, create a mechanism for the applicant to allow us, to allow, to ask for that. That's what I'm struggling with here, is I just want to make sure that we're not inadvertently creating an allowed use.
So James, the conditional use permit is an allowed use if you meet, and the interim use is a time-bound...
So both of them are very similar to each other. Both of them are essentially allowed uses as long as you meet the conditions, which is, one of the conditions is it needs to be supported by the city of Brainerd's comprehensive plan. So there are, you know, conditions built into that, but they are, would be allowed uses in that zone as long as they meet the conditions. So we have the allowed uses section in there, we'd have to look at that, and then there is the conditions for granting a conditional use permit in the rules, or in the administration portion of the code. So it'd have to meet all of those things, and then essentially, it is an allowed use. And then, with conditional use permits, planning commission can put any conditions onto, onto it to essentially protect the health and safety of the public in that neighborhood. And then the only difference with the interim use permits is you can put a time limit on them.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Marone.
I feel like I understand now. So maybe it's important to point out that this ordinance only affects someone who owns, buys, acquires a residential house, and then wants to tear it down and make it into a parking lot or green space. It won't affect someone who has a conditional use permit or comes in for a conditional use permit for a site and wants to add parking. We don't prohibit parking. I wish we would. I would vote for that tomorrow. Like, I would say, no more parking lots, no more parking period in the zone, like, I would vote for that tomorrow. That's not what we're trying to do here, and that's not what the moratorium was, and that's not the process. We should do that. Like, I would love to do that, but that's not what this does. What this does is it says, if you're going to expand parking, it's not going to be by buying up residential houses and tearing them down and making them parking. If you're gonna add green space, you're, you're not gonna do that by buying up residential homes and tearing them down. And so we don't prohibit parking here, but we do say that it's gotta be approved through, you know, that alternate use has to be approved through the normal processes that we have, which would be a conditional use or an interim use permit. And we can write that down, we can do that, but we're not prohibiting parking. I would love to prohibit parking, let's do it. But this just says, this one specific mechanism that is being commonly used is no longer available. Does that make sense?
Yes, and this, this draft ordinance also prohibits the removal of dwelling units if an individual wanted to, to take a historic home that's been divided into a multiplex and put it back into one home. This...
That's true. It's a good point.
That also, so it has that broader application now, and by sweeping that in, would we wanna create a, would we wanna create a release for someone that wanted to do something like that through the CUP, or do you say that the door is closed and cannot be opened?
Well, if we're gonna prohibit parking, let's just prohibit parking, like, no parking lots. I would love that. I'm all for it. But, that wasn't, that wasn't what we went to the council with. What we went to the council with is something that was narrower. You know what I'm...
So it's, in its current construction, it, it has that broader application of...
Yeah.
...limiting the removal of housing for whatever means.
And let me, let me use an example of the hospital, as an example. If the hospital came in and said, "We would like to open up our conditional use permit, we'd like to look at this, and we would like to change our conditional use permit in a way that would do A, B, C, D, or whatever, and one of the things we want to do is tear down these three houses, or these two houses, or this house, and make that into a parking lot," they have the right to come in and make that request, even though we've, we've passed this. And we would go through a CUP process, and we would talk about that, and, you know, there'd be conditions, and it wouldn't necessarily have to be approved the way they brought it forward, but, you know, that would be the process. But if the hospital just came in to get a demo permit to tear down a building and make it a parking lot, they, they can't do that now. So that doesn't, I mean, it gets us here, it doesn't get us here. I would love to go here, but...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Gorm.
If you look at C2, C2 says you can, one of the exemptions is to remove any unsafe or hazardous structure, and so perhaps hypothetically, the hospital can say, "Well, this house hasn't been maintained, therefore, it could be up for demolition," but then maybe we need to look at who is the owner of the house, and who is responsible that way.
Number two would say that it would be removed by the city of Brainerd, like, we go out and condemn it and remove it. It wouldn't be them, like, bringing that forward. There is a loophole here, and I'll, you know, talk, if you just, if, we don't have to pick on the hospital again. I think the hospital is, you know, just great. If, if anyone wants to convert a house into a parking lot, and they just buy a house and let it sit there and rot and become hazardous, there's a loophole here. I think we are playing a game here with good actors, like, I'm not gonna assume nefarious things, so I, I feel like that's a loophole that I'm not worried about being exploited.
And I do believe that allowing a structure to rot in place is already regulated, and there's checks and balances through the property maintenance code in the city, so there would be, there would be certain actions that the city might take. So there's, there's an opportunity to intervene before something gets ruined, if you were recoverably ruined.
It would be in the case of a fire or some type of, you know, some type of damage like that, where it took substantial damage enough to be condemned.
Yeah. Another loophole, which I don't, you know, the... Another loophole, which I don't, you know, the, the things that, the places that we're worried about, I don't think are gonna, you know. I, I think we have to assume good intentions, which I do in this case in particular.
What would you, thoughts? Put you on the spot.
Well, I would like to add clarification language to number three, but also I'm, I can't fully wrap my head around the, the avenues that someone might need for a specific project. And I think putting, putting additional clarification language on number three might also put additional limits on there for things that, that I can't anticipate. I don't think I have enough knowledge to, to craft good language for that.
Ms. Chair, if we really want additional language on number three, I think we could just say, approval has been granted for an alternative use of the property through the conditional use or interim use process.
That's what I was going to say, yep.
I'm good with that.
Funny you're nodding there, I think maybe that's the...
I like that it prevents rezoning.
I just want to make sure the group understands that if we add this language, that implies that tearing down a residence to build a green space or parking lot is an allowed use as long as it, you go through the conditional use or the interim, interim use process. It's an allowable use.
Ms. Chair, can I get clarification? Parking lot is currently a conditional use in the code?
Mm-hmm.
So we can do that on its own? Huh, interesting. I, I thought it was...
You see what I'm saying, right?
I thought it was an accessory use.
Do you have an alternative?
I don't, because I, I'm, I'm, I'm going along the track that we either just say that you cannot do this, and there is no avenue of which to make a, to make a case for it, period. Because as soon as we say this is, there's an allowable use by conditional use, an applicant can come to us, and legally, they have a right to do that if they meet the conditions we place. And we would be, it would then be incumbent upon us to say, "Okay, I guess you can do this with these conditions, and if they meet those conditions, they may get their parking lot, or their green space." A, a future board.
Yeah.
Versus just saying, "Look, you cannot tear down buildings, you cannot tear down residences to build green spaces or houses, period."
It's interesting, because it is if, there's, I, I can't think of a place in the zoning categories where you could then build parking, because wouldn't they pretty much all require you to tear down a house?
Maybe, yeah.
I mean, I'm, again, I'm fine with that result, but that's different than...
But you're saying, well, there are lots that are, I mean, you, because you're saying because of the infill, because of, because all lots currently have residences existing on them, right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess there might be a couple undeveloped lots where you could do this.
Most.
Can I ask the staff a clarifying question?
You may.
Is a parking, parking in these zones, I, I'm bringing up the code, but I don't have it on, is parking going to be an accessory use, or is it just a use, like a conditional use?
Typically, parking, if it were on the same lot, would be an accessory use to it. The, the way the parking, and I know the way Swanson-Hazcamp wrote it, is that if it was a parking lot kind of set away from the building and a separate property, a lot of times it would be a conditional use in some of our zones. But if, if it's on the same lot, it'd be considered kind of an accessory use at that point.
Right, but I'm wondering if we allow, as, as Kevin's saying, do we allow it as a conditional use on its own lot?
Potentially in some of our zones. I don't, I'd have to look, I don't believe, a lot of, like, the TN1 would have that in there. I can clarify that here.
I guess that's what I'm, because does that make sense? Because...
I know for, for, for parking lot expansion, for say, a school or a church, that would be, that would require immediately a conditional use permit, because that's an expansion to the property.
That would automatically be an accessory use.
It'd be an accessory use, but there's an expansion to the property, so they'd have to, you know, amend or, or apply for a new conditional use permit for that, because churches and schools are conditional uses in all of these zones.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
I am happy to remove A3 completely. I don't think it adds all that much to this process. It gives another safety valve outlet, which I don't find necessary. And if no one is offended by doing that, I can't say that the council won't be offended by doing that, but I don't know. I'm certainly not. So what we would be saying in effect is that in these zones, TN1, TN2, CN1, CN2, you cannot, even through a, a permitted process, tear down a residential home without putting a residential home back.
Consensus on that point?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gore.
I, I agree with Mr., what Mr. Jaeger's been saying. It's troubling the way it, it's worded right now. It just seems like an automatic, "Oh, we just go this way, boom, there we go, no problem." I don't think I would miss it. I don't think I'd miss A3.
On behalf of everyone struggling to find a home right now, I say we strike it.
So I'm, I think I'm, I'm seeing consensus here that we remove A3 from, from the proposed ordinance. Are there any other areas of the draft ordinance that we care to discuss? Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion. Well, yes, I'd be looking for a motion.
Ms. Chair, I make a motion that we recommend approval of the, the new ordinance. Does this thing have a number? Ordinance number 1539, as presented by staff, with A3 being removed in its entirety.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Jaeger. Oh, sorry. I didn't see, I'm sorry.
So, second, Jaeger, is that what I hear? Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? And hearing none then? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So that recommendation is heading to City Council. James, what would be that trajectory of this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So that will be, the first reading will be November 21st at City Council, and then the first, let's see, then the first meeting in December, it'd be December 5th. That'd be the second reading, and there'd also be a public hearing for that as well.
All right, so that concludes item 6A, old business. We are now at item 7A, outdoor lighting temperature discussion. Director Cranby, can, can you please set that up for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission directed staff to review example ordinances from other cities regarding light temperature standards that have been adopted in their respective zoning codes. This was a result of a workshop discussion. So staff did review lighting ordinances from cities of similar size of Brainerd. Some of those cities are Baxter, Grand Rapids, Bemidji, Moore, at Fergus Falls, Detroit Lakes, and Little Falls. Did not see lighting temperature standards within those codes. Staff did find an example of an ordinance in the city of Greenfield, Minnesota, which is in the northwest, maybe northeast twin cities metro area with a population of approximately 2,903 residents. So this example ordinance contains language requiring dimmable lighting in certain uses, which has also been of interest to the Brainerd Planning Commission. Staff also included an example of an ordinance from the city of Bloomington, one of the few other cities that I could find temperature standards in their code. So Greenfield, Minnesota, within their code, the drive-through and drive-in establishments did have the 3,000 Kelvin or lower lighting standards in there, but they also did restrict the lighting to be dimmed at at least 50% or turn off at 11:00 PM, one hour after business close, whichever is later. Then within the standard for the entire city color temperature of lamps, they listed it throughout the city at 3,000 Kelvin, and then also 5,700 Kelvin for recreational lighting in their ball fields and various parks in the city. So those are the two standards throughout the entire city. Recreational lighting, I touched on with that as well. So I did get a chance to reach out to the city planner of Greenfield, Minnesota. They had said that there has not been issues with the adoption of this. They actually went a, a little bit further in this, rather than, rather than having to apply these standards when there's a new poll or replacement poll, they actually forced all businesses within three years to comply to this. So they went even kind of a step further to that. There wasn't a lot of pushback on that, but I think they also tried to do it residential as well. There was some pushback on that, so they only did it with businesses. But new projects that have come, there haven't, haven't been a lot of issues with the, the new lighting standard here. When I did talk to the city planner, a lot of these numbers that they came, came up with were a result of their, looking up some of the standards from the International Dark Skies Association, which recommends lighting temperature to be more than, no more than 3,000 Kelvins. Exposure to blue light has been shown to be harmful to health and endanger, endanger wildlife. That was stated in the International Dark Skies Association website. Did want to touch base on Bloomington's lighting ordinance. Did not get a chance to, I did try to contact their city planner, did not return a call. They do have a lighting temperature standard of not less than 2,500 Kelvin, except for approved architectural lighting. So I'm not sure, they may not want the very dark, kind of almost orange lighting, but did want to just put that out there in case, you know, instead of having a below number, potentially there'd be a range within, in our ordinance. So with that, staff did look at where the language could be potentially added in our code. It'd be 15, 515-4-8.D., which is your lighting restrictions. So with this, color temperature standards of lamps, all new lighting must be LED and must have a correlated color temperature of 3,000 Kelvin or lower. Also, I'll kind of move forward to the dimmable lighting. All new lighting must dim by at least 50% or turn off at 11:00 PM or one hour after close of business, whichever is later. I do think if this was added to it, there should be a section here that this applies to commercial or industrial uses, wouldn't be citywide and residential zones. And then the recreational lighting, this is what their recommendation was, they haven't had issues on their, on their fields, but it was 5,700 Kelvin. So this would be in the parks and, and, with, within the parks, I think there'd have to be the park board signing off on this as well. They'd need to have a discussion on this to be able to put this into the code. Our code does include, for heights and some various other areas, zoning code stuff for parks. So we do have a review for parks before anything's installed on there. But I do think the, the park board should have a, a say on this part as well before putting this into code. And I know from our last discussion, we also talked about street, street lamps and, and lamps in our right-of-way, and Brent, if you could put that picture up there. So this was provided by one of our commission members here on, on the difference of kind of our, our 3,000 Kelvin lighting versus something that's maybe more in the, the 5,000 to 6,000 range, and, and how different that can be. So I did get a chance to speak with the city engineer on the light poles. So all new light poles that go up, we do have, I believe they worked through it for a number of months. There's one for residential and one for, I think, more of our thoroughfares, commercial areas in our right-of-ways. They come with a 4,000 standard, 4,000 Kelvin standard bulb, but there are options for 3,000. At a department head meeting, discussed with BPU, because they'd have to have a conversation as well, BPU is the one that actually changes out the bulbs. They said that, you know, we may have to bring that before the, the BPU commission to, to see if they're going to be a lighting standard for streets. So with that, one potential idea would be to try to hold some joint workshop between park board, planning commission, BPU commission. Certainly be a lot of people to, to try to coordinate, and a lot of times to coordinate with that. But if, if planning commission did want to go down the path of, of trying to put something into code or policy for street lighting as well as parks, I think both, both of those entities would have to, to have a say in that as well. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that the planning commission has.
Thank you, James. Any questions of staff? Yes, Mr. Maron.
Is there a, does BPU have a standard that they're using right now? Or is it just whatever they pull off the shelf?
You know, I was, I was made aware of the one that's on the right there, it sounds like that's a pretty new lighting LED bulb there. So, you know, I'm not sure about that part of it. I did ask BPU, they didn't have an, an answer for that part of it. I may have to contact the person that is actually in charge of, of changing the bulbs.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay. I, I was just wondering if, if you knew if they had something specific.
I do not, I did not know that part, but I know, I do know the new light poles will have, have some standards to them.
Okay.
Questions of staff? So it's telling that, or it's important, I guess, to, to recognize that City Council has authorized a budget to replace a lot of street lighting here, and, and I'm not sure that that had the specificity of, of the color in that, in that, what the city engineer brought to City Council, and what City Council authorized for expenditures on that. So that's within the past six months, I think, there was council action on making, making a budget reservation to kind of work through and gradually replace all of our street lighting. So this would be an important issue if we wanted to, to be sure that street lighting, whether broadly or in residential, or however we would want to think about it, were to, were to get into that budget process, or, or influence what will likely be a purchase of a lot of lighting in the city. So, James, I would, I would agree that the dimmable lighting seems like that's non-residential. The recreational lighting, non-residential, I'm not sure that's relevant, is it? And, I mean, that's pretty much public recreation, right?
Yep, yep, so that would, that would be in our, pretty much in our parks.
Yeah, so I, I think we could, we think about that, I think that parenthetical non-residential is just clarifying that for this discussion, or the color of, color temperature would be more broadly, we're thinking. Go ahead.
So I did put non-residential in there, just to show that it's for non-residential purposes. So in, in, in our residential areas, it'd be a 3,000 Kelvin or lower, because I do know people around the city that maybe put up their own hockey rinks, or maybe not in, in this city, but some of the other areas that, you know, that's technically recreational lighting, but, you know, this is for non-residential areas.
And, and the light levels should be reduced in the event, after an event, that, so that the turning that stuff off, and I was trying to think about how that relates to, to B5 and E3 in the, in the ordinance. So E3 is the outdoor recreation standard. No, no outdoor recreation facility shall be illuminated after 12:00 AM in E3 and in B5. We're saying outdoor athletic facilities shall shut off within 90 minutes. And so we've got, we've already touched that in those performance standards. Do we really need to include that here if we've got it there?
That would probably be redundant, yes, and contradicting.
We're in conflict potentially here, because these don't seem to necessarily agree what we have in the ordinance. So, you know, as I was looking and thinking about this, you know, if you were to rewrite section D, it seems to me that, you know, you're talking about lighting controls, how you, how you're controlling your lighting, right? So one of those aspects is trespass, keeping it contained in the, you know, in the originating property. Number two is, you know, if you were to think about subparts of then, that section, I would see one is trespass, two is color, and three is this dimmable elements. And then you have a section there, and then we would move from there to the performance standards of height and, and, you know, whether you have recessed fixtures or shielded fixtures and those sorts of things. of things, there is a way to think about that. Were there any other thoughts or reflections on, on this?
Just real briefly, thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could just get the picture of the two, and I do appreciate Mr. Cranby for protecting my anonymity, this was my photograph that I submitted. To me, one of the most telling photographs is the one on the left here. If you look, this is a street where we have the, what I'm gonna call the older style or the current style, more 3,000 color, and then down, further down the street, you can see the, the same street light that's been replaced with the 5 to 6,000, and just look at the pool of light on the ground in the surrounding area on the left-hand image specifically there. That pool of light versus the pool of light that's further down the road on the left-hand image, the other, there you go, down the road, keep looking down, there you go. The dramatic difference between just temperature and, and just how it makes a street feel. So I've read through this, and, and I was so happy to see that there was another, another city out there that has, has drafted some language on this, because this just seems like a no-brainer to me, but I'm super excited about this. This will not have an overnight change in our city, but it, it's my belief that if we were to do something like this, first of all, we'd be on the leading edge of cities to take on lighting and dark sky type, type ordinance, but 20 years from now, this would be a dramatic difference to our city, and I think this would solve a lot of the other issues that we're hearing with, with, with light pollution that are in our parks and in our commercial areas close to residential zones, because the volume of light is, is an issue also, but it's that color of light that has most people sensing the issue. So I think if we were able to just fix the color, I, I think that a lot of these other, these other avenues that we're talking about would, would kinda self-correct as well. So I'm 100% on board with this, I'd love to see us put it in place, and I'm not sure that we would mandate it within three years, but these fixtures don't last forever, so if we, if we did put something in place, eventually it would, it would be a, a big difference. And when you're in a city that is colored correctly versus a city that is either a mix of color or all colored the opposite direction, it's night, it's, I was gonna say night and day, that was a terrible, I like, it's, it's dramatic. So I'm all in board on this, and I'd love to be a part of the body that, that put this in motion, so that's all.
Thank you. Comments or thoughts?
I'm all, I'm all in, too, and I, I feel like the city, the, the city can and should lead on this. There's no, when we look at these two, it's not like there's a price difference, it's not like there's some, you know, we're saving a bunch of money by having crappy lights, we can do this well and there's no impact to the budget, it's just a thought, thoughtful thing.
Right.
And, you know, quite frankly, on the right, we're breaking our own ordinance.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's, you know, so I'm, I'm in. What, what do we need to do to?
Well, I think where we head up.
What's the step?
I'm in favor of coordinating, however difficult it may be, getting, getting the right bodies coordinated to do this. There are studies, they keep coming out, and especially being somebody who sells books and reading glasses, the, the level of macular degeneration that we're starting to see is preventable in a lot of cases. It's, it's worth recognizing that this is an issue, this could be an issue, this is something worth taking care of.
Thank you. So, James, whether we need to assemble all of the bodies of all of the boards and commissions affected, or, or could we have a workshop with key representatives, whether it's chairs or what have you, with some of these other bodies that, that, that could, that could speak with guidance and with, with commitment, so that we, we know whether we got something or not here, that, that we're not crafting something with some input that does not have the support despite the input being provided. Could we, could we possibly, that, that seems easier than trying to get all of the bodies in the room for, for a scrum on lighting, you know?
Mr. Chair, real quickly, if, if the group would permit, I'm on the park board. We have a meeting coming up in, I think, two weeks, and I'd be happy to pitch it in front of the group, basically the same presentation, and, and come back to you guys with feedback in the form of memo or whatever, just give us the, the ability to move forward, so, but I'm feeling very confident they would be in favor of this.
I think that's...
I could act as a liaison between the two groups, if you'd like.
That's great. And then with the BPU, how do we, how do we?
And I'll work on, on that, I'll talk to Scott and, and see what the best foot forward would be on that, whether I go to the next commission meeting, whether it's something that he could talk to them about, so I'll, I'll research that part of it.
All right, thank you. And then there's the, the great Washington Street Project, and our, our collaborative partner in that is MINDOT, who has their own standards, and, and there is a relationship between the City Council and Department of Transportation on, on that evolving project, and it would be lovely to, you know, if we're, if we're all on the same page on this as we're going in, and how, how that lighting could complement the general direction of the city.
And I'd like the, the city engineer to be a part of this conversation as well.
So I think you've got input, I, I think, a very strong read from the commission that we're all in, we wanna go move this ball down, down the field here, and, and then, based on that, we may be coming back with a draft ordinance to, to then, without a public hearing some point in the future.
That sounds good, I'll work on that. So it's, it does seem like we have also a general, general consensus that it's not the entire body of each commission, but a select group, so I'll work on that, on, on how that would potentially look as well. Is this something that the planning commission would like to try to do before the holiday season, fit that in there, or would this be potentially after?
It would seem after, it seems pretty aggressive to, to try and get that done in that shorter timeframe here.
Okay.
So if we were to be able to look at this as a, as a January item or, or a February item, that seems reasonable.
Okay.
Okay, good. Thank you for putting that together, James. So any other discussion on the lighting? Hearing none, let's move to item eight, which is the public forum time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the planning commission. And Brent, do we have anybody online? So I will open the public hearing as a formality at 6:58, and we can run the clock, or we can also close the public hearing at 6:58. And then we're at item nine, community development director's report, James.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I did just wanna update the planning commission on the last City Council meeting. It revolved around the My Neighbor to Love Coalition projects. There is a preliminary plat that came before the planning commission, as well as the CUP for the boarding house, as well as the CUP for the 12-unit apartment. So part of the City Council meeting was also a request for the alley vacation. That's in the resolution form, that was voted four to three by City Council to approve that resolution. And then after that, the preliminary plat, as well as two conditional use permits, were heard, and those were approved. So I will be reaching out to Ms., Ms. Kenny, she does know that she does have to still do the final plat, so that is something that we'll probably be looking at in the future is, is the final plat coming back to planning commission. With that, that's everything I have.
Thank you. Any questions on that? All right, commissioner questions, shall we start with Mr. Maroon?
I have none, Ms. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Woodward?
I'm good.
Got nothing?
All right, Mr. Jaeger.
Nothing.
Oh, yeah, 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 play fake, and nothing here, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And, all right, we have a motion by Woodward, second by Jaeger, any discussion, hearing none, all go to vote.
The second was by Gorham.
Gorham, excuse me.
Exactly. Please.
My apologies, Mr. Wood.
Accepted.
I did the same thing earlier, I feel bad as well. Guy with the hearing problem. So, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you, everybody. And at 7 o'clock, or 8:01.